Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday. Holy cow, it's October already, October 2nd, 2023, time is 6 o'clock. We're here in the Select Board Conference Room in Hybrid on Zoom. Uh, this meeting's being recorded. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please make it known to the Chair. Uh, in attendance tonight is myself, Doug Moglen, Vice Chairman Jason Perron, Clerk Diane Gale. C A O Steinhardt is on Zoom, Assistant C A O Signoni is here in person, and Lisa Anderson is also here. At this time, I'd like to start the recording and then have a pledge of allegiance. Buddy, you want to lead us in the pledge tonight? Okay, as is usual, we'll start off tonight with public comments. Uh, if anyone has anything that they would like to address to the Select Board that is not on the agenda tonight, now's your opportunity. Uh, we'll start with the room first. Anyone? Okay. How about on Zoom? Okay, great. I see no hands. Do you see any? Visually sound, there's one chat. Who's that? Can't see the room. Joanne can see the room now, though. Okay. Okay. Since we got late start, we're right at 6:05, Conservation Commission Discussion of Members' Proposed Acquisition of Parcel for 13 Berkshire Avenue. Is there anyone here representing the Conservation Commission?
Yep.
Are you? Come on up. Come on up. How are you?
We are just fine.
Excellent.
Yeah.
You want to introduce yourselves for everybody watching at home?
Sure, I'm Sabrina Poehler, Conservation Commission Coordinator.
And I'm Norm Cheever, Acting Chair. We'll be electing our Chair this evening at 7 o'clock.
Can't wait. You want it? Different, different meeting.
You can take the lead here.
Okay, I'll take the lead. So I got a phone call from a property owner of 13 Berkshire Avenue, and he would like to donate his parcel of land to the Conservation Commission. Do you see this?
Yeah, right.
You had gotten some like a pocket. Okay. Um, so the parcel is essentially located, um, it's adjacent to the rail trail and it's also uh, adjacent to Berkshire Avenue. There's also a portion of the parcel that is shoreline right south of South Ramp. Um, the parcel is mainly um, wetlands, swamplands, however you want to call it. Um, but there's also some uplands as well. The total um, is 1.88 acres, I think. And we had a meeting last week, was it last week or two weeks ago with the Conservation Commission? And they had said that um, they would like to accept this donation for habitat purposes. Wow, I'm very close to that.
The land value is $6,500, 1.8 acres.
Is that the assessed land value?
Yes. About a hundred dollars in tax.
The boat.
Yeah.
That's from the Conservation Commission.
Also looks like a benefit that's kind of the outflow area for Great Brook, isn't it?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
I know we have stuff we want to do there.
Yeah. That's what.
Please.
So the uh, line out here, that is the wetland delineation, is that correct?
That's the approximate. Yeah, the map is not necessarily accurate.
Yep. Okay. So would we put a small walking trail through there to get to the bike track?
It's possible to do that. Um, I had also thought that the shoreline property might be a good spot to put a dock for town boats. Um, here or out? The shoreline. Yep, yep, that parcel right there. Um, I was a little shut down for that idea in our Concom meeting because I guess it's pretty shallow there.
Yes.
Um, not sure if maybe down the road it would be dredged. Um, we could put a dock or docks, I believe, were able to have 75 feet.
75 is.
75, yeah, so I'm not sure if 75 feet will go over all the um, shallow areas, but that was just a thought that I had and I talked with the harbor master about, and he seemed like it would possibly be a good idea, but this is just thoughts going on in my head of what we could possibly do with it. I would like to have a boardwalk, to be honest. Um, going from the rail trail through the upland portion of the property to Berkshire Avenue. That would be nice.
The southern side?
More than likely the southern, the southern side, just from looking at the property.
Line is, yeah.
Yeah.
The western.
Yeah.
About 45 feet from that quasi line is left to the border. Is that enough space to put a few parking spots?
I don't think so. I don't know if you drove by, um, but right now I think that area is lawn for the neighbor. It doesn't look like a very big area.
Land could also be quite swampy in that area. But we did discuss could parking go there, and it certainly should be carried forward as a possibility, but.
Have to kind of look at the public safety aspect of that, too.
I know Dennis said that it's probably better to keep it in its natural state.
Um, Sabrina, as, as part of the discussion with the Conservation Commission and the the likelihood of wanting to acquire this property, was there a willingness because of all the steps that may go involved in acquiring this to use uh, maybe a community preservation committee application to that committee to help with all the uh, the background legal costs, uh, if we have to do any additional surveying costs, maybe any other potential uh, permitting needs to ac- um, acquire the permissions for a boardwalk or any of the things that you're thinking about? Have they thought about that in terms of a of a uh, a budget with a bunch of components and then maybe trying to get funds to be put in place as an, a um, a funding source to help underwrite that process? Because at this point in time, I don't believe that the land's not a for sale. It's not going anywhere, so we have time to do this in such a way where maybe we could look at all those other issues and then see how the project budget could be used to ac- acquire the property.
Um, we didn't talk about that. That, that is a possibility, um, but of course, purchasing a property using CPA funds, you do have restrictions. Um, and sometimes those restrictions aren't in our favor. We do have a conservation trust right now. There's about $13,000 in there. Um, that might help for the legal costs, um, and whatever associated cost that comes with acquiring the property.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I don't know how much a boardwalk costs, though. Um, of course CPA, CPA funds would be great for that, but like I said, CPA, CPA is amazing, but there are limitations um that come with it, and it, it's something that we should discuss for sure.
The property is looking to be donated to the town, not purchased.
Yeah, actually, that, that's another thing. If it's donated, we're not purchasing it, purchasing it with CPA funds, so if it's not purchased with CPA funds, then it is not applicable for CPA funds. Good point.
I'm not sure if they changed that regulation. That used to be the case at one time. Uh, but that became an issue all over the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and then that might have been one of the regulations that they had relaxed on the, on that process with subsequent legislative clarifications.
Um, I haven't heard of that. So I can ask.
As an alternative, you purchased it for a hundred bucks or something, and then you purchased it with CPA funds.
Yeah.
Right. I, I just think if we're going to go forward with it, let's, let's, you know, the land's not going anywhere, so let's look at all of these different items and and figure out what's the best way to acquire it. Look at what we think the cost might be and then what the um, other options that people like Mrs. Gale and uh, and what your board is thinking about might want to use it for. Uh, where it could serve a bunch of different needs. It would certainly be helpful to the Park and Rec Commission for a segue to, for people to access the trail, because we need more, we need more trail access points and we need more parking throughout the community for people to access our trail.
This is true. Yep.
Correct. But the, and the other was the, um, I think what Carl's alluding to is that the cost of the though the land may be free, there's going to be significant cost in the acquisition of same. And we may have to have it surveyed, the documentation, all the other stuff that may have to happen. And um, as for a boardwalk, great idea. And I believe Concom has experience in that space because they put one out in the middle of the trail some years ago. It might have been one of the first ones that they ever did, and
Back here?
It was the Medicom Trail, oh, behind um, off of uh,
The sliding bridge?
Yeah, there was, there was, we have a bridge, boardwalk, yes. And it was ginormously expensive because of the requirements that came along with a granted project.
Okay.
Um, and the Concom also purbited the one behind Town Hall. If you ever want to, any one of you can take a walk down there after tonight's meeting and, and it'll bring you down to the brook.
Correct. So there's all kinds of all good ideas. I, I have no objection with acquiring the piece. I mean, I think it's a very generous donation from a resident to want to donate that piece. It's all, the genius is all in the details, right, on how you get it done? And Carl, that's a good idea as far as whether you can have this, you know, have a small CPA article to accommodate some of the cost that's going to be incurred with acquiring the land. Um, without it becoming a full fed, full-fledged CPA project because technically town funds wouldn't be used to acquire the land. It would be the preparatory work for same. I don't know.
Okay.
And maybe that's just brass tacks. And CPA would have to, we'd have to talk to someone else and see what, what they think is their opinion on if you use CPA funds as a, you know, an article ahead of acquiring the land, but the CP, it's not a CPA article to acquire the land itself? Because I'm assuming this will be the, you know, the ceremonial one dollar acquisition of a piece of land. So worth a discussion.
Okay.
But from the board, I, I.
Absolutely, it's worth. You know, I just, they also too, it looks like there wouldn't be too much other use for that individual. I'm sure, Miss Gale, how good you say the tax is worth?
A hundred and four dollars.
Yeah.
At today's rate.
Yeah. You know, I just, I was looking at some of the issues that you were up with, the parking interest, and it's directly across from the boat ramp.
Right.
You know, which, and you know, that's, that would be my concern as far as the parking. I don't think parking.
Yeah, I thought of that, too, if it wasn't for.
Or otherwise.
Would park there. But.
It needs no parking sign.
Yeah, there's already a lot of parking signs, let's say, like, you know, with trailer only, and I think they're only trailer onlys in that one, so you can kind of tell when someone's just parked there.
Coming in with trailers that can't quite fit there, that I'm just going to stick it there. But you know, obviously, this, it's a great idea. I mean, you've come along, we just got that uh, federal purchase of the land for the trail and everything over to our recreational community, so we want to keep it that way.
Mm-hmm.
And when we can. And it's beneficial, but I'm great.
One more great access to the trail, to the brown trail, so.
We'll leave it to you guys to work with Carl to, for the details on what, what else is required from this board. Obviously, you would have to go to a town meeting for the town to acquire any kind of parcel. Has to be an article at a future town meeting.
Okay.
Great.
And thanks to be a landowner.
Yes, very much so, absolutely.
No, if there's going to be a fall meeting.
We're working on that now.
Okay. Let me know when you guys know for sure that you've put some pep in my step for this. But of course, it would just be probably November, so I probably wouldn't have.
Correct, especially if you have to have it surveyed and everything else, but
Yeah.
It looked, it's looking increasingly likely that Mr. Perron has asked to have one, and we're looking at the scheduling with the the moderator and facilities and other people's availability for those dates between now and the end of the year.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, but you can see if there's already a survey and for the trust, it probably does. It's, it's in the hands of the trustee.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 6:10. Agricultural Commission Appointments Discussion with Chairperson Bert Hanson. I see Mr. Hanson in the room. How are you, sir?
I'm well, I'm good.
I'm great. Okay, we have. Let's see who's here. I, I know I saw Angelina on Zoom, correct?
Yeah.
Nope, she's waving at me now. I'm looking at the name. They're waving at me. Jennifer Burnier, Burn.
Burnier. Burnier.
Burnier in the room? And Thomas?
Right here.
There he is. I wasn't even going to try that. It's, how to say it again?
Javis, J-A-D-I-S.
Just like it's spelled.
Easier said than spelled. Well, I have a, if I may, um, a suggestion. I had an update. Some of these, some of the things we like to see. Before, it's on the agenda to have Angie Simone Doe from an alternate convert to a full commissioner. Uh, as you know, she just was appointed alternate last August, but she's been coming to Ag meetings for at least a year and contributing uh, to various, you know, farm forum, open farm day, um, so.
Hold on.
Yeah.
We got to open that door. This is an open meeting. Okay, thank you. No, I get it, so people can see the screen, but it's, it's literally an open meeting. You got to have an open door. Thank you.
Yeah. So anyway, I'd like to see Angie become a full commissioner. Um, we have Jennifer Burnier here, who has applied to be an alternate, and it's like Tom. Donald, um, and I don't know if, I've been went through an interview process of Angie, the summer. I don't know if you want to ask them a couple of questions. Um, like I could see them appointed as alternates. Um, there's one other candidate, Jonathan Thornton, and he had applied uh, back in August as well, I think.
He withdrew. He withdrew.
Yes, okay, I just, yeah, because he has a, a conflict uh, standing commitment out of our regular meeting night, second Wednesday, so he's going to in the background for a while and um, you know, see if any other opportunities come up. So if, oh, now, uh, I remember the question.
I think I know what I want. It was the Fort Worth ribeye 12 ounce? Medium rare?
Sage, we had to mute you, bud. Okay.
I'm getting hungry listening to that dinner order.
I did. This meeting's over by 6:45. Let's go.
So anyway, a little question about uh, Lynetta Bober, who uh, requested to be, to go from full commissioner to alternate because of her time commitments. And I think we had done that, because she had communicated with the board.
Correct.
That desire, so I just want to, I think, I think that's all done.
Um, I think we did that one.
Yeah.
I, I think we did. I think we're good.
I can't confirm nor deny that. I can go back a minute. That was the intent. You and I had discussed it and we followed all the process of advertising it and blah, 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 so I think that was done correctly. And I can confirm.
Little back and forth on this stuff, so I'm not 100% sure.
Right, but it's, well, this one's been a, a work in process, right? So we're getting better.
We're, we're almost at the finish line.
I keep saying next year's going to be a piece of cake.
Um, so I'd like to, with the board's, with your action, have Angie become the um, full commissioner. Uh, Jennifer become an alternate and Tom become an alternate. And if that happens, we will have seven commissioners and five alternates, which is what the bylaw uh, calls for.
That is correct. As we voted on it back in, when we voted, when we voted on it, correct. So I have, um, I, do you have any questions that you want to ask of any of the applicants? I have, I have a couple, but
Yeah, go ahead.
But I, I defer to you as the Chair first. You've already set this all up?
Well, we've already talked, so we both got to know each other. Alan Tom was involved with the Open Farm Day.
That's, and that's how I got to meet Tom, so I was.
Um, yeah, I think that day we both talked to him about getting on the board, on the commission.
Do any other questions from yourself to these, or you, you've vetted everybody already?
Extremely enthusiastic about this, as is Tom. They're both very outgoing, engaging people, so that's who we that's who we want to see.
Well, that made it easy.
Can I ask any questions first?
I sure will. Have you attended any Ag Agricultural Commission meetings? Or zoomed in or watched them on YouTube?
Prior to this, not at this time. Um, so I have, I was a part of the Conservation Committee meeting, or Commission meeting last month, um, uh, but I haven't had any um, opportunities to join any meetings at this time, but I will definitely be looking at calendars and I haven't had a chance to see all of the um, meetings on calendars. I don't think all of them are on the calendar, on the town calendar, but now I've been very.
Only just before the agenda comes up.
Yeah, so um, yeah, from here on in, um, fully vested in meetings.
Uh, you'll be able to attend them?
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Same question to you, Tom?
I, I have not yet at this point. I really found out first about it as part of the uh, Open Farm Day, you know, as I was talking to multiple, you know, commissioners and, and select board members and, and alternates and something I was interested in. Um, I have volunteered within the town, um, coaching on the soccer program for the rec center. Uh, I'm the treasurer of the rec center soccer program today, and so as my kids have kind of aged out of those teams, you know, I have some, you know, time available and I'd like to contribute as soon as possible.
Questions for Angelina while she's on Zoom?
Um, not from me. I know her participation. Well.
I've seen her around well, as well. I guess a couple of questions I would have. Uh, I'm going to ask the, the common one. What what, what brings you to want to join the AgCon?
Um, well, basically, I moved here in 2014. Ever since, I've been wanting to, um, I live on Lakeview Street. Um, been wanting to be a part of um, the town in any way. Um, I have been on the um, committee for the Southway 250 with Frida Brown. Um, volunteered for that a little bit before everything happened with COVID, but um, I know it stopped abruptly. Um, but um, I do have um, experience in um, meetings. I am a team lead where I work now currently. I work first shift, so I'm able to attend meetings at night. Um, I'm a team lead at Dino Novell, um, explosive company in Sims Ferry. Um, I have several, um, you know, lots of experience with meetings, agendas. I'm the treasurer of the union there as, um, you know, as well. So basically, just wanting to give in any way my time to the town. Um, I do have more time available now. Um, and then being uh, newly going and completing my bachelor's environmental science, um, that's also getting me more interested in um, getting into any kind of conservation or agricultural um based committees or that, so um, I look forward to serving in any way that I can.
Answers that question. Mr. Jaj, I'm going to throw the same one at you.
Yeah, no, it's uh, you know, I've, I've been around agricultural communities my whole life. I grew up in Lebanon, Connecticut, which is eastern Connecticut. Very small rural town, um, you know, have, you know, corn fields across the street growing up. I live today on the old Tish Dairy Farm. It's obviously not working now, but there's a lot of history there that my father-in-law owns. And you know, his legacy, he spent his whole life up here making sure that the property still looks good. We, the property is leased to Richard Woodger at Rockwood Farm. So you know, we enjoy watching that, participating where we can. We really did have a wonderful experience with the farm day. Um, and anything I can do to help further the continued agricultural, you know, nature of Southwick and the recreational community, I'm, I'm happy to do it. I'd love to be a part of it.
Thank you. I'm good.
That was right up the alley. I was going to ask too, is, you know, where, where is the agricultural interest here? Because in one of the, one of the kind of tenants of that is to have some agricultural experience on that board, you know, leading, you know, we have some of that now, and I want to see that continue. Um, and um, you're right, Thomas, we got to meet at, at the Open Farm Day and what a beautiful piece of property that is, and glad that, to see that it's still being, um, you know, used for agricultural today, so um, that's all the questions I really had, and I appreciate the background you presented as well, and Angelina, I'm familiar as well.
I mean, just to point out to Angelina, it's a teacher right now, but she's from a farm family in Feeding Hills, so. It's a mystery.
Fair enough. Where, where, Angelina?
It was, um, it used to be the Kerr Brothers Farm. It was a dairy farm in Feeding Hills, um, Northwest Street. It's where, now where Autumn Mist Farm is.
Gotcha.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thoughts, motions, comments?
Um, after everything I've heard, if this is what Mr. Hanson's looking for, I have no problems making a motion to make Angelina Simone a full member and to add Jennifer Bernier, is it Bernier or Burnier?
Burnier.
Burnier, and Mr. Thomas Jaj as a associate members.
I will second that and thank you for your, your background, your educational required, your, that you're bringing to it, and your history that you're bringing into it. That's great. Second up.
I just hope the explosives part doesn't come into play. It's just really, really hoping.
Don't store that fertilizer over there.
Let's keep this going after hearing Sage's dinner. Uh, roll call vote, Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Welcome. To remind you that everyone who was just appointed needs to be sworn in before the next AgCon meeting. You could do that at the town clerk's office during regular business hours. And if we need to make any accommodation, let us know. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If this keeps up, we may have to add.
Stop it.
An office?
We would need our own agricultural commission wing. Okay, uh, 6:30 PM, EverSource Poll Hearing continuation for 25 Meadow Lane. This was a, this is a continuation of a meeting we started last week. Uh, I have a folder right here. Look at that, we almost got a quota. When we last met, I read the public notice, so I don't think we need to read it again tonight, and
You might have to.
I might have to?
Yeah. I moved the structure, so it would be in the center of a sidewalk, therefore definitely on town property, not on the Schindler's property.
But I don't need to read the notice.
Well, no.
I think, but we're going to.
The measurements are.
Yeah. So I was just going to summarize this, so um, couple thoughts from this was we, when we met last week, there was some discussions from Mr.
Yeah.
Parentella, I just didn't want to say it wrong. Mr. Parentella regarding the location of the structure. Um, and then there was discussion, and there was an attorney, I do not see him on Zoom tonight. Um, that was on representing Mr. Filio, I believe, at the top of Meadow. Uh, but to be clear, that this application in front of us is only for the location at uh, Mr. Parentella's property. That it's going to connect to the transformer at the top of Meadow, so that is germane, but the location of the equipment at the top of Meadow is really not germane to this hearing.
Sure.
Um, so just to be clear, and then uh, during the hearing, I believe, or it might have been right after, might have been the next day, it was suggested that we look at um, located, uh, locating the structure actually in the sidewalk underneath it and, or having it exposed through the sidewalk.
I did the next day.
It was the next day that we spoke, so, or it was on an email, and I did reach out to Randy Brown, the DPW engineer. I also know just from personal experience that there is these types of structures uh, in the town of Southwick. Um, in fact. In fact, there's one in a residential subdivision on Pearl Brook. There's a Verizon box on Pearl Brook. So I had sent a photo of that up to over to Randy to have him take a look and, and give any thoughts back. And then I also noticed on your property, they'd actually marked on the ground where that was. And I had sent some photos back to, to Lisa and Randy on what was being laid out there. So we can have that discussion tonight. There's a photo, that's not my, there, there you go. So we can pass these around.
These are manholes in sidewalks as well.
And other manholes.
That's on Collin Town Hall.
Yeah. So Randy's, Randy's significant concern was one, well, one, these are paved pavement sidewalks. They're not cement today. And that obviously it would be EverSource's issue if it starts to rise up or fall down. We're going to have to call you out to fix it. Okay, everyone's up to date? Is everyone up to date? Nodding of heads. All right. Sir?
Thank you.
Okay. Floor is yours, sir.
I moved the structure so it would be in the sidewalk, so it wouldn't be on, shown this property. That's pretty much all I've got. Everything else from the last stays the same.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add or add to this discussion on this?
A couple of things, yeah, my.
Do we get your name and address for the record, even though I pointed at you two minutes ago?
Parentella, One State Coach Road, Southwick. So thanks, Jason, for laying out the structure because there were some concerns that and there was, it was kind of, it seemed like it was in the middle of my property. I just wanted to make sure where it was in the center of the road and if there was any options or why it had to be there. It needed to be either across the street or at the other property, but I'm buying it. It looks like it's an all town property, you know, from the center of 15, but I measured, it seemed like it was 22, he had 25 years. So it seems like he did his due diligence and I don't have an issue of where it's going.
Great. Do you have any further questions on this hearing?
I do not.
Do you have any further questions on this hearing?
You asked the question of the person I would have asked it to.
Does anyone else have any other questions on this hearing? Anyone on Zoom? I answer suddenly 14 chat messages. I don't know. Anyway, no, it's Sage talking about his dinner. All right. So I then need, I believe, a motion to close the hearing.
We'll just have one last question, Jason.
Just made it.
When is this happening? Do you know roughly?
I don't. Within the next couple of weeks. We have to get the rover done before F ball plays close.
Okay.
And we're going to enter these into the, does anyone else want to see these? Or have you seen them already, Mr. Parentella?
Yeah, they're.
You're going to die too, that's what the.
And we'll add this to the record as well. You saw them live, right?
Yeah, I saw them live. I saw them hanging.
And here's what a manhole cover is going to look like.
Yeah, we talked a few weeks ago. He sent me all the information and layout, so that was great. Up front or everything, so I'm buying with what he presented.
Excellent. So I'm going to add that here. So then and now we'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I will make a motion to close the school hearings at 25 Meadow Lane.
Second.
It's a roll call vote, please. Doug Mogul and I.
Jason Peron, aye.
Dan Geller, aye.
Great. Okay, we hereby certify that on October 2nd at 6:30 PM at Southwick Town Hall, 454 College Highway, a public hearing was held on the petition of EverSource for permission to construct the line of poles, wires, cables, fixtures, and connections. Described in the order here with recorded, I mailed at least seven days before each hearing a written notice of the time and place of said hearing, which was continued to tonight, October 2nd. To each of the owners of real estate as determined by the last proceeding assessment for taxation along the way, upon which the company is permitted to construct the line of poles, wires, cables, fixtures, and connections under type order. And thereupon said order was duly adopted. Would someone make that in the form of a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote. Doug Mogul and I.
Jason Peron, aye.
Dan Geller.
Okay. I believe that concludes everything. Do you have a business card, by the way?
I do.
Sure. Thank you very much. Hey, thank you very much. Appreciate your help and explaining and walking us through all that. I believe so. Unless you want to stick around for the rest of this fun.
Thank you both.
Yep. Have a good night. Thank you, Mr. Parentella. Okay, payables, 10 minutes. Accept open session minutes dated 9/25. Did anybody get a chance to review them? I did make some edits over the weekend and sent them back to Lisa. I believe this is the updated one.
It is. Most, like the motion to accept them?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Motion to accept the open meeting minutes from the September 25th meeting.
Second.
Doug Mogul and I.
Jason Peron, aye.
Dan Geller.
And do we have exec session minutes to distribute?
Yes.
Set a motion then?
I'll make the motion to accept the executive session minutes.
Doug Mogul and I.
Jason Peron, aye.
Dan Geller, aye.
Thank you. Award, meeting discussion items. First is to award bids for Southwick Police Department CPC projects for slate roof and Carl, you want to give us a little background?
Sure, Mr. Jim. And these, both of these projects went out to bid based upon preliminary estimates that the clerk of the works and the facility supervisor had secured. And when the bids came in, which as you can see by looking at your packet, we did have a good decent number of bids come in. Some of them were a little out of whack, so we, we can certainly address the slate roof repairs within the dollar amount that we have. It was a little bit more than Arthur had contemplated, so he does want you to and is recommending that we award that to DP Carney Construction for the slate roof part of the CPC project. And then on the COOPLA document, he is recommending we reject those bids because they were well beyond the estimates that people had given him. And in fact, one individual had come up from Cape Cod with a $232,000 bid for something that's not too much bigger than the table you're sitting at. So.
Okay. So let's break this down then. So do we want to make, would, someone like to make a motion to award the police station slate roof repair to the apparent low bidder of DP Carney Construction Inc.?
I will make the motion to accept the bid from DP Carney for the slate roof.
Right, and that is for $31,796 was the low bid. And Arthur did do the the due diligence on checking the, the two low bids, and they were both fine companies and he's good with it. So, and as you can see, his recommendation is for the apparent low bidder.
And the bids range, by the way, for those playing along at home, from $31,796 to $116,000. And that would be the guy from Cape Cod as well. But the rest of them were sort of in line. There was an $85,000 as well. But anyway, that's done. And then for the we're going to just let this one fly over the COOPLA, right? And not, not award this one?
Well, yeah, he, he's going to do some more research and it may necessitate him and David going back to the Community Preservation Committee for a supplemental appropriation, sir.
So we'll take no action on the COOPLA repair for now.
What was the first estimate on the COOPLA? Do you know?
I, I think, let's see. I think it might have been the 25 to 30 range, but you know, obviously this was well beyond that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And I think that was the, the whole, the whole project is under historical because the building and the roof and the COOPLA are all historical in nature. And boss can get a little wonky with that sometimes when you start to with the different building construction types and so on and so forth, but they'll go back and take a look at that.
So Doug, are you, are you rejecting the COOPLA bid or tabling it? Or what term would you like to use?
I'd like to table it.
Okay.
Subject to a motion of the board because that way we can preserve them for now in case we, we have, we find that we do just need to go back and get a supplemental to do the work as quoted. Or if we go out to bid again, well, then we can come back at a later meeting and reject these bids and, and analyze the new bits. So I'd entertain a motion to table this for now.
I'll make the motion to table the bids on the COOPLA repairs.
Second.
Doug Mogul and I.
Jason Peron, aye.
Dan Geller, aye.
Hey, I'd like to, while we have a lot of the members present as well, I'd like to acknowledge the VFW invite for Veterans Day Parade, which will be on November 11th, Saturday, I believe, right? At 11 o'clock, lineup begins at 10:30 at the Southwick Plaza. And I believe we'll go to the town green, correct? Okay. Excellent. Darcy, are you expecting any more folks to show up? Or are you all here? Okay, so with the permission of the board, this has been under old business for a while. Regarding the land lease agreement that we have with the VFW for the town-owned property that bought the motocross track. And I'm sorry, the American Legion, and we've gone, we've had some requests for documents, which have, some have been presented, but I see that Darcy Rock Commander is here tonight and he wanted to have a further discussion with the board. So if it's okay with you guys, we'll just take that out of order and allow this discourse.
I found that I, I made an error on the paperwork that I sent in to you last week. I don't know how I did it, but my calculations for the total that we have paid for this land lease over the years is actually $47,750. I don't know how I made that error, like an $8,000 error. But so I wanted to present this, this new with the new price in it. That's the only thing I changed. And it's a license, not a lease.
Correct.
So, you know, we did, we did pay up for this year as requested. We still would like the board's consideration to either drastically reduce what we have to pay every year because right now we have, we have paid for this piece of property nine times. With what we've paid in lease and what the piece of property is worth, we've actually paid for it nine times. I think that's excessive for a organization that only exists to give back to our town and our community, as I stated in that form. We have given thousands and thousands back to this community and we continue to today. So we would like you to accept that new number. And with all the documents that we received from you guys, I really, I don't have anything else that you didn't send me to give to you, except for what we've given away in dollar amounts. We don't have any extra paperwork that you guys didn't have. So that's, that's what I'd like to present to the board today.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have questions for me?
We haven't been able to discuss any of this except in an open meeting, so now's our chance. So.
Do we, in what I've read, is there any recollection how this went from a dollar to $5,000 and to $50,250?
It predates me a little bit, and I have bits and pieces of the history, and I, I'd rather not make an error and tell you something that might be partially incorrect till I had all my, all my ducks in a row. I think I know some of the folks I can talk to to ask about that, but there, I believe that there's, again, I don't want to talk out of school, but I believe that there is some history there as to how it went from A to B.
Okay.
And I can come back to the board with that.
This may be a question for Carl. Should we have other segments, parcels that we have similar licenses with?
Just one, the only other license you have is the 141 Cogmont Road sidewalk area there. So you have no other licenses. And then you, you did approve one a few weeks ago for Berkshire Ave. For that one, but those are the only licenses you have because those are short-term entrance instruments. Anything longer than the three years has to go through a town meeting vote. And the, the other issue you have here is this is, this is land that we leased to the school district. So any change in any instrument, whether it's the license or a lease or anything, would necessitate the board conferring with the other major party of the agreements, which is the school district.
There's one other question. Is the, the piece that you use, is there any fencing around that?
There is, there is, the way that it is structured is when you, when you come up to the Legion on Legion Road, if you bear to the left and you go down the gully, there is a gate across there. And then that gate goes around the back of, of what is the WIC.
Yep.
And it goes all the way around. That specific piece of property only has a fence abutting one side. That's it. The rest of it's open. It's an all open area. That's, it's, it's only used to get to and from to the WIC and for parking if they have huge events.
I really have nothing as far as asking questions. You know, Darcy's presented an awful lot of stuff and some of it was kind of strange to get through, but I know where I stand on all this, so.
Which is?
Well, I believe down the road, we could, I would, I would consider a reduction, absolutely. You know, you know, and I'm not going to say this Southwick isn't Southwick without the track, but Southwick isn't Southwick without the track. The track, I, I've, I've raced motocross. I know people across the country from the industry as well as just Utah. Oh, that's where that track is, you know. There is no other track like it. I, when I raced there as a kid, I had a property up in Granville where I lived with my stepdad. I tried to make a track so I could be competitive. There's no way you can mimic that track. So and then, you know, the rugged mania, everything that comes into this town, it brings so much to that town. I would definitely entertain it, at least a reduction of some sort would be the way I would look at it personally. That's my opinion.
Is there any other use for that piece of property? Or is it just the WIC events, your events?
Was it a right of way?
Since, since I've been around and at the Legion for 20 years now, it has not been used for anything except for the WIC.
I can actually answer that question because I forget when they cleared it, but prior to it being used by the WIC, it was a wooded area that wasn't used for anything. Prior to the Wally Park and the attempt to bring in the development by Mr. De Palma all those years ago, that's where everybody pitted. That was the pits. That's where the probes came in, everything. After that lower section of Wally Park is where all the big trucks came and that's where everybody went. That was the pits prior to this section being opened up and utilized. And I'm not sure when that exactly was. I, I left for the military in 93, and when I came back, it was different.
Right. I, I know there was an individual at some point that went and clear cut it without the Legion's permission, without the town's permission, without the school's position. And they were running the track at that time. I'd have to go back and, and look for the name, but he did it on his own and we have been paying for it. he did it on his own and we have been paying for it ever since. And I mean, literally the, the property is not used for anything except for the WIC.
Do you have a proposal you'd like to bring forth?
The post would like to buy it if you'd let us.
And in lieu of that, do you have a proposal as to what you think this should be?
I think we should revert to what we paid from the fifties up until, or when the track started, we've had the post since the fifties. It was for over twenty years, we paid one dollar a year.
And do you have any knowledge of the history of how it got to five thousand dollars? Five thousand, hundred and fifty dollars?
I, I will firmly. I I believe it was a vendetta. I don't want to throw anything out in a recorded meeting, but I believe it was a vendetta against the Legion because someone had an angst against us. And I think that's how it happened. I mean, there is no other reason why it should have gone from zero to over five grand. When, since the fifties, it's just a piece of property sitting there.
Yeah, come on.
Of course, it's an open meeting.
I didn't know the reason, which is why I asked. My thoughts on it were with what they have paid since two thousand fourteen, when that went up to that amount. Exactly as she said, I would have suggested that we convey it to the American Legion for what they have paid to date. A ceremonial dollar.
The old ceremonial dollar.
My suggestion, I, I not knowing, I, I was waiting to hear what the, how it got to where it got, but.
Like I said, I also don't want to speak out of turn. I, I've heard it anecdotally and I, you know, there's some folks I need to reach out to. And, and I just wanted your take on it and I appreciate your candor. So.
Because I believe it's not used for anything else. It has been maintained by the American Legion all this time. I don't believe the license agreement is paying for any maintenance on the property you do all the
We, we in the WIC are in taking mowing. Care of everything. It, it really doesn't require much maintenance. I mean, because it is, it is a
It doesn't get watered, right? I guess.
Yeah, it's, that's, it's just the sand parking lot. That's all it is. I mean, it originally it had trees on it. We've discussed that, which was done wrongly. But that's
History.
Right. Why, why are we still being tapped for this every year?
I guess I get to be a little bit of the jerk in the room. Why did you execute another successor agreement last year? With a, with a three-year term?
With everything going on, like I said before, I was told by my finance officer, you have to sign this. You don't have a choice. You have to sign this. And against my wishes, I signed the document. And then this year, when it came up again, I also said we shouldn't be doing this. This, this is not right for our veterans and for our town. And that's why I brought it to you guys this summer. Because I still strongly believe that we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be having to pay this.
Carl, when does this agreement run through?
I think there's another year on it. I believe this is the second year.
I think you're right.
So Darcy had signed a one-year one originally and then paid the second year and then they just paid the second year of the new one. So next year will be the third year, the three-year. Because that was executed by the town, the Legion and the school committee.
Darcy and Mr. Steinhardt, I, in my research on this, talking to previous track owners and whatnot, is that utilized as a right of way for the school emergency access? I was, I was told that. Does anybody know for sure?
I don't know anymore because we have, we have never seen a vehicle come through. We, we've never heard from the schools, never that I know of, that they've come and said, okay, we need this open. You can't close this. We've never heard anything from the school. I don't believe they use it for anything.
Yeah. And if it is, it would remain a right of way.
I would assume, oh, we would never stop the schools from coming through there or fire, or fire or anybody.
Yeah, I think that question would be best answered by the police department that acts as the incident commander for the flow of traffic for events in that area.
But having and, and having this land available, and I'm not trying to be adversarial, I really not, is, but having this land is part of the requirement as my understanding between the agreement between the Legion and the National.
That is, the Legion and the WIC.
And the WIC, sorry.
Yes, that is correct.
I've worked so hard to make sure I said Legion that I screwed up. But that's correct, right?
That is correct.
We got to make sure that
Yes.
For everybody's interest here, that, that
Right.
Somehow that you guys have access and control over this.
If we were to falter paying you, then we are faltering for Rick Johnson. And, and we won't do that. That's, that's why we paid it because we're not. He's important to us. He's important to everybody.
Agreed.
I would like to clarify my recommendation. It was to allow them to purchase it for what they paid to date and terminate this license effective that date. To be complete.
Yep. Is there anything else to add?
Look, Ms. Gail was a little more gracious. I was going to go to the end of the lease, license and leasing and then recommend something along that lines or a significant reduction similar to what was proposed by Darcy. I'm not opposed to working with the Legion in any way she performed.
Okay. Regardless of both good proposals, I will come back to the board with some history next week. We, no matter what happens, again, the regardless part is the school is party to this agreement. So they have to be party to any alteration of saying, so.
And we are absolutely willing to work with the school and do anything they would deem necessary to take care of them.
Okay. Does that seem like a good, good plan?
I think that sounds good. So we'll come back same time next week?
Yep.
All right.
And does anyone else have anything they want to add to this? What's that?
There's no meeting this.
Oh, it's a holiday.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we'll be seeing you. Not on Monday, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to meet the eighteenth. No, because I mean, I'm still in September, but that would be the sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Sixteen.
Yep.
Do any, you have anything to add?
The new finance officer, the post leader, my name is Jason Parkback. And the only thing I will add to it is that I kind of reiterated five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars is five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars that we didn't donate to the town. So if for some reason we can't, you know, purchase the property for any reason, I would say that I would suggest signing the longest term lease agreement for a dollar a year. However, long it can be twenty, fifty years, if we can do that, that would help everybody out. If for some strange reason, we can't purchase the property because of something with the school, something with the right of way that nobody knows about in this room right now, then for the benefit of the Legion and the town and everything we donate money to, we should sign the longest term lease agreement for one dollar a year, ninety-nine years, whatever time that is.
And I bet Buddy's here to see the successor agreement.
It was, I mean, we had a twenty-year lease agreement at one point and then the lease agreement before that, I'm not aware of it. So it certainly can be done. That's my suggestion. Perfect thing would be to, would be beneficial to everybody. We would officially be the custodians of the property and the right of way would not change. It would be, it would be saying exactly the same.
Fair enough. Sir?
I'm good.
Yeah.
Buddy?
I'm good.
All right.
Okay.
We'll come back to it. Keep plugging away at it.
Thank you all for all your diligence in this and for hearing us. And if there's anything else you need from us, please let me know.
Will do. Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll go back to our meeting discussion items and action items. Again, Lizzy Bennett. So here's the acknowledging sept donations totaling a thousand and forty dollars from Sandra D. Fifteen dollars, IBS, a hundred and eleven dollars, Carrie L. Fifty dollars, Tina M. Fifty dollars, Rotary Club of Southwick, thirty dollars, Stop and Shop, a hundred and nine dollars, Summer House and Miscellaneous, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and John W. Two hundred dollars to be deposited into the AC Animal Control Medical Gift Account and the Animal Control Gift Fund Account. I need a motion to approve donations in that, those amounts, please.
I will make the motion to approve those donations in the amounts.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Okay, we have a memorandum of understanding between the town of Southwick and the Southwick Police Officers Coalition regarding appointing one of the officers that we hired as a provisional officer while completing the FTO requirement and receiving his certification from post. Sorry, Police Officer Standards and Training Committee. So, and it's been executed by someone who should have gone to medical school by the signature, but I think that's Mr. So we need a vote of this board to approve having the chair execute this on behalf of the select board as police commissioners.
I will make the motion to approve the memorandum agreement.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
And congratulations, we got a DEP grant award six thousand dollars for sustainable materials. Out of five, five point two million dollars in SMRP funding, Sustainable Materials Recovery Program to two hundred and eighty-three municipalities and regional groups, we got six thousand bucks. So I need a motion to accept that grant award.
I will make the motion to accept the DEP grant for the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug, can you sign that copy you have in front of you?
And then I'm going to give it to Nadine so that it gets put in the right place. I'll do it after the meeting. Okay. New business. Carl, you want me to read this or you want to make this announcement yourself?
No, you can read it. You're the, you know, it's, it goes to the board. It's anticipated. It's planned for and you will respond accordingly and do the right thing.
So we have a letter here addressed to the honorable members of the select board from Carl J. Steinhardt, CAO. And this letter is his notice of retirement from the role of Chief Administrative Officer for the Town of Southwick effective May tenth. With last day in the office on March twenty-ninth. And he will be utilizing some leave balance during that time period through the end of his service. Carl goes on to state that he has thoroughly enjoyed his thirty-five years of service to the town. Raising his family, making great friends and serving with a dedicated group of appointed and elected municipal professionals. Carl, I think we owe you a debt of gratitude for your service to the town and taking us to this level. And you were absolutely positively going to be missed, but we are now officially on notice. So March twenty-ninth is going to be here before we know it. Well, you really know how to damper a mood card. All right.
I'm very thankful, Carl, for everything you've provided me so far.
As am I.
Thank you.
I know where you live, so.
I know. Jason, Jason keeps reminding me that's where I live. Well, I think the important thing is, and Nadine can confirm, the request for proposals have been coming in for the consultant company that you're looking for to assist you with the search process. So that's encouraging. You're getting that, you're getting that stuff. So important thing is, is after, sometime after Friday, you know, next week we'll be able to unseal them, not the, not the price proposal portion, but the other part. And then you'll be able to give them to your selection panel group.
Thank you. And then the next order of new business is, we actually have received a letter from town treasurer, collector clerk, Michelle Hill. Ms. Hill will be leaving our employ as of January second, twenty twenty-four. However, she will be vacating the in-person role on December the eighth. And she'll be on vacation. She has decided to pursue a, an opportunity in another community. So we are in the middle of, we'll come back to this and carry this under old business. Because we're in the middle of waiting for Special Act of the Legislature to split up that office. So we're going to, we're going to have to strategize on how we're going to deal with this vacancy and appointments therein and in the absence of the special act, which is pending, which it's, it's a formality, but it's just state government, hard at work. We should have it anytime now.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm obviously, I am waiting for an update from the state legislature. I think the important thing to do is, is obviously right now, the position is an appointed position of the three select board members, chairpersons of the finance committee and the assessors. And we may have to obviously work with different interim service vendors that can help team up with our staff and other department heads to cover the, the office. And of course, at the same time, Michelle has offered to assist us under a personal services contract. That would be very helpful for us in case we, we need her for different elements of the functions of the position as we go through and decide who's going to be in what role and who's going to take on what function. So, you know, so that's important. I very much thank her for doing that. I thank her for the seventeen years of service and for being a member of the town management team all of these years.
Correct. And I too would like to thank Michelle. I mean, she's done yeoman work in that office. Based on what we went through at town meeting and the research, I believe that that is the only TCC office left in the Commonwealth at this point. And to do that in the, a town of our size with the increased regulatory burden and all the paperwork burden is, is it's tough, it's tough to do and she did a great job in that role and you know, I appreciate all her help and service over the years and certainly wish her the best in her new role.
Michelle is online at our meeting tonight. Because she just wanted to raise an issue with a computer software issue that's going to interfere with our maximum service level of counter transactions. So you might want to have her log on and congratulate her on her new assignment and to speak to that issue, just so the board will have an idea what's going on this week in terms of a software upgrade and how it has implications for our operations.
Well, with that segue, Michelle, would you like to chime in on that?
Absolutely. So on Wednesday and Thursday, our software, which is Munis Tyler Tech, we're actually upgrading. That date's changed multi-times. So it's finally confirmed. We have no choice. They will basically pull the plug otherwise. So with us set, our systems are all going to be down. We don't know the exact time, but it's going to be for up to two working days. That poses a risk management issue that I will have in my office during that time. I'm going to strategize on some ideas, but it's nothing I wish to talk about in an open session. Um but I just want it to be very well known that there's me extremely limited transactions at my office for two days straight.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
And if you can't answer it today, that's great. If not, if you could come back to us. If people that have transactional things that are due within those two days, will they have a grace period added?
There's nothing. There is nothing due during those times, so we still have plenty of time to make payments.
Just making sure.
We also have online available, so nothing prohibits someone from not going. They can still go online and take care of business.
Excellent. Thank you, Michelle. Diane?
Yes, um Michelle, thank you for that information. And I just want to say this was sad and surprising to hear. It's that another wealth of information uh will be departing, so gives me chills. But I, I hope it barks out really well for you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm sad too, but yes.
Everything happens for a reason. Michelle, congratulations on new, you know, it is a tough thing, losing between Carl and you. Uh my math is horrible, fifty, was it fifty-one? However, many years of experience and, and the level of positions that you guys do, but um I, I want to wish you nothing but the best uh as you move on. Thank you for the offer of still assisting us in whatever way we may need you.
Thank you. I, I definitely put myself out there because there is um a lot of, a lot of moving parts um from the time that I'm leaving for non-stop for several months. So um I'm there definitely to help the best I can.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's why Mr. uh Mr. Chairman and part of our contemplation on opportunities and strategizing for backfill, the other thing, we also have the option is to pursue one individual um, you know, position backfill and leaving the other one open so that at least we're substantially covering one of the functions. So we should be mindful of our ability to do that and who we might be able to reach out to that might be interested in this assignment, because these types of positions, people are not necessarily lining up to do. Um and secondly, there's, there's a learning curve that goes with these, and we've all seen those reports issued about the great significant number of retirements that are happening statewide.
Correct. Thank you. Do you have any other new business, Mr. Steinhardt?
Um, well, I think, uh, let's see, Diane and I are going to be having a Green Communities meeting with the Piney Valley Planning Commission under that uh local technical assistance and the staff members sometime in mid-October with the, the other staff members to go over eligible items. So that was the, the key thing I just wanted to remind you is that's still underway and ongoing.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Perron?
The only new thing I'm starting to look into is um I have been approached, or not really approached, but spoken to by several people over the last year since I've been on the board about business opportunities that have fallen by the wayside because of the way um liquor licenses are able to be held on to and whatnot. Um I've done some research on what other states do. I know A B C C kind of limits what we can do. Um but I also know as a lo- local licensing authority, we can put some conditions upon those. Um I really want to start looking into possibly looking at, if we've got licenses that aren't being utilized for us, you know, a period of time for us to determine, I would be, I'd say, we are, we look into possibly being able to sort of say we're pulling it back. If that's something we can do, because I know of at least one business that completely lost out, had a sale and did not, because there was no liquor license available, and I know there's a couple that are kind of in limbo. And I believe Lisa Anderson told me today, and I mean, I'm not sure if it was Carl that was there or Nadine, but apparently with one forty-one Congammon Road, there's something coming down the line with that. So, you know, you've got these things that are hanging there. I mean, or benefit to the town in some way, shape, or form, and we need to be able to pass them along, if we can, to people that are going to utilize them for the benefit of everybody.
Well, you cannot have a pocket license. That's clear. And we've had different situations in the past with, with, you know, deaths of owners and, and places operating on a limited schedule or winter hours or summer hours, so the discussion to have going forward. Um unfortunately, we also had one business just fail that has a license today. So we'll see what's going to happen there.
It's too bad.
Yes, it's very unfortunate, but um yeah, it's a good discussion to have.
Yeah, and part of that discussion, Jason, will be obviously, if you've got a facility and it's in fairly good shape, then it, you know, if it's going to change owners, that's great. Then that will allow it to have the, the license move forward with the new ownership group and be used as opposed to other locations that may not be of a public, you know, a facility in good shape anymore, where those are the kinds of licenses that may lend themselves to being um, you know, reconciled for other uses in the future. So that's going to be part of the boards. Um you, you know, when, when Lisa updates the listing that she'll get from the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, we certainly can go through and find those places where those um concerns are, and we could reach out to them and ask them for an update letter on the status of, you know, resuming their operations. It's one thing if somebody's doing major capital work and it's going to take a while and they open it. It's another thing where if no work is happening on the premises and they're barely open, so. So that's the, that's the distinguishing issue you got to look at when you start applying how you want to approach this matter.
Very good. Thank you, Carl.
Is that an annual renewal?
Yeah, yes.
Yes. And I believe there was a fairly public play out of this, this exact thing in Northampton.
Yeah, actually, yeah.
Just like literally through last Friday, he had, and was given till five o'clock to either sell or open.
Oh, that one.
Right, and he sold a few and opened a few, so, but that was a perfect example of not allowing a pocket license, right? I don't know all the details, but it was exactly on point to what you're talking about.
Right, but that would also remember, that process took a while. There was a number of noticing provisions that were given to the party. So I would not be thinking that too much could be happening in the next two or three months, because there's a lot more due process that rights that people have that have the licenses.
Yeah.
And, and other states are also looking to it, it's going to be a tough hill for anyone to climb, but other states have been looking at revamping their their licensing. You know, in some states, the licenses sell for millions of dollars because there's only so many, and they have, they, they're worth more than the business itself. It is like a taxi cab medallion used to be in the city, right? Um but in, in Massachusetts, it, they really don't hold that kind of value. So, which is a good thing, because it lowers the bar to entry for someone who wants to acquire one.
Yep.
Um anyhow.
And then the only other thing I, I, this is going to probably get me crucified. Um meals tax. In this town, I know tax is an ugly word anywhere. With the shortages that we are looking at possibly in the budget. I, I, I don't want to speak out of turn here. I've done the research, but some of the numbers slipped from my head. It is three quarters of a cent on every dollar. Uh um I, I, or is it three quarters of three? I can't remember the specifics, but on a hundred dollar restaurant bill, it comes to seventy-five cents. I know people are going to say, like I said, probably crucify me for this, but the simple fact is, I would rather look at possibly doing this, and the people I would assume would have to vote on this anyways. Um actually, I know they have to. Um and my reasoning is, is we need revenue. And unfortunately, we don't have the commercial real estate, the commercial draw that some of the other towns around us do to, to, to be able to offset those, those hard hits. Um and that little bit, and it includes um uh prepared meals, so even things that like, I, I don't, it's the small businesses. It's tough, I understand that, but um I think we need to look at it, you know, and, and you know, I've looked at some of the other numbers from neighboring communities, and it, and it can bring in several hundreds of thousands of dollars in some of the other towns, you know, in the million range. But uh I just, I want to look at everything that we can do to avoid putting the taxes, the tax burden on our businesses, owners and property owners and homeowners in the town of Southwick. This would be something that would be absorbed by people coming here, but a lot of the towns around us already have it. Um but like I said, I'm looking at every option I possibly can to help us bring in revenue without throwing it on the backs of all of us who live here or own businesses here. To me, it's, it's worth at least looking at and talking about. And if it doesn't happen, then it doesn't happen, but I think it's something we at least need to talk about.
What surrounding towns has a meals tax?
Westfield does. Westfield does, and oh gosh. Agaw, yeah.
Agawam has it, right?
Yes, it's on my favorite Mexican bill.
That's right, it is on my take five bill. Um yeah, I probably shouldn't promote businesses. That uh, yeah, it's it, it's, it's an evil word. I understand that. And the last thing I want to do is cause people to have to spend additional revenue. But I think most people uh that are going to be going out to dinner or buying things could and, and then, like I said, you put it to the residents that are going to be, may, might be upset about it. Do we take it out of the, your excess cash, free cash, or other people's free cash, or, or uh spending money, petty money, however you want to put it, or do we have to, you know, it comes back?
That, that also includes prepared food at the grocery store.
Yep, that's what, yeah, like I said, a big Y.
That isn't just going out to dinner.
That is, yep.
Free cash.
Anywhere that has prepared food, that's, yeah. But it's a, it's something I think.
That's a breach to fresh produce that is cut and wrapped.
I would have to look at that.
Just saying.
Uh but I've been on record with this before, and I, I don't think my position's changed. I'm, I'm not in favor of a meals tax. I will tell you.
I'm not in favor of it.
I just think our restaurants have been punished enough with the, with COVID, and I really think even at a dollar or, or slightly more than that, it's going to be impactful for people deciding to go out to eat or not. Um as a total aside, in an attempt to make some levity here, if you ever go on the D O R R website and read some of their appellate decisions, they have a discussion, and don't ask me why I know this, on this exact issue with taxation and sales tax and meals tax on prepared food in restaurants, uh in supermarkets. So it was, and it was within the last four years. I was there for something else, but um they have, it's completely on point to this very discussion. And how did I do with changing the subject? Not good, not good.
No.
It's a bad taste in your mouth. But I would rather focus all of my energy on cutting wastes and reducing
Well, that again, there's a couple of things that are going to bring up, I'm going to bring up an old business that I've, that I've already talked about, that I want to continue to start, really start working into, looking into, and but I just, and I'm fine without doing it by all means, but you know, I wanted to mention it to see where, you know, the board was thinking. And I'm sure the public is going to express what, what they're, we're thinking too. And that's what I'm here for, is to listen, to represent them. So if they say no, I'm good with it.
I, I, it, I'd be interested to see what that number would be as a generation, generated number based on total receipts, say, last year. Because you can't go by twenty-one or twenty.
The problem was, the problem, I actually, I, I'd have to find it again, but it's
D O R would have it, probably on the sales tax.
Well, the way it is, it was input in certain places, it's in, because was they actually combined all local option taxes as opposed to one package. Uh the cannabis was listed separately, but uh your meals and your hotel taxes, because they kind of fall under. And I'm sure Mr. Mogul is going to be able to find a lot faster than I could.
No, I wasn't looking, I was making a note to myself on something else you just said.
Now, we chose not to implement a short-term rental local tax.
Correct.
Which was, that would be people's free capitation money without burdening everybody.
And, and I
We chose not to.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, that's correct.
And, and to your point, I think one of the things that we talked about was we, there's a fee that essentially kind of fee is supposed to cover the town's cost. So the, for the permitting application and the inspections. And in some places, uh think major cities or airports, right? These kinds of taxes are great, because you exact them on everyone who doesn't live there and can't vote on them, right? Think hotel taxes, car rental taxes, airport taxes, blah, 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 right? But a meals tax in the town of Southwick, as much as I, you know, we need more restaurants in town that are destination restaurants, frankly, most of the folks that are going and are eating in our restaurants are our residents for the most part.
Mm-hmm.
Um so I, I, I think you need to take that into, into consideration in the whole thing. And getting back to the, the short-term rental, we had a very poignant discussion on that, because that is an option to instill a local option tax with the adoption of that uh short-term rental bylaw and was sent back to the planning board with the, from the Short-Term Rental Subcommittee with explicit ask, though it's, your elected planning board's decision was an explicit ask not to um impose a short-term rental tax.
Well, like, like I said, I wanted to bring this up to present my reasoning and what I was thinking. But I am, you know, I am not anyone that wants to raise fees. I mean, like I said, we joked, we've joked about it before. My very first meeting, I got to raise a was either the trash fee or the sewer fee, I can't remember.
I'm pretty sure it was the sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was that.
Don't worry.
Which is coming up.
Stay tuned.
I know.
Yeah.
You'll get your chance.
Um, okay, that's all I have for new business, Mr. Mogul.
Okay. Uh the only new business I have is just to announce to, to us that the Mass Municipal Conference was announced today, and that's January nineteenth and twentieth.
Now he's getting dessert.
Sage, you're killing us tonight.
The fudge cake is ice cream on top.
Yeah. Lisa, can you mute?
I got it. Try it anyway, it won't let me. Anyway, so um so that's coming up, so that's uh for those that are looking to attend. Uh if you can try to clear those dates on your calendar, because it's always very informative and very useful for, in our roles. And uh typically, we go out Friday morning early and come back Sunday morning early. I think you went out Thursday and came back Saturday. You did it kind of.
I did it obviously.
We'll try to organize it a lot better this year.
So
Yeah. Anyhow.
And hopefully I don't, I can actually find all of us when it's dinnertime this time. I just kind of got spun around.
And uh that's all I had for, oh, we do have, uh that's old business. I'll cover that under old business. So any other, you have any other new business? Where you got, okay, uh old business. Marijuana Dispensary Research and Options, any updates this week?
No updates on that this week. I actually was looking to see how, see a new computer.
The only update I'd like to add was that there was news out of the triple C.
Oh, I did see that.
That they uh they took it upon themselves to reserve their um to exert their authority over host community agreements, including existing host community agreements that parties entered to in good faith and agreed to and signed to um that they now have the right to bust those up if they so choose. Um I alluded to that in previous meetings, and, and when we were in front of, all of us were in separate corners of the room at the planning board for the zoning hearing regarding marijuana or can, and cannabis, and I, I suggested that the planning board go in their own direction and completely ignore the triple C, because whatever they do is whatever they do, and you're subject to whatever they do unless your rules are, are such that, you know, if you, if we decide to have a limit or distance or where we zone it for, um that's beyond the, the triple C's purview. Um and the same thing goes for, but the, you know, host agreement is not worth the paper they're written on, because this outside entity can just arbitrarily change wholesale sections of it. Uh municipal aggregation for electricity?
That's one of the things I was looking at right now. I left a message for Mr. Coyle today and an email. Uh and I spoke with Carl today. Neither of us have heard anything back from either Mrs. Greenblatt or Mr. Coyle at this point. I have nothing new to add to that one.
Select Board Goals and Objectives. Select board goals and objectives.
I want to add, I believe it was one of the ones I had originally mentioned. Um, it was again, that was what I was talking about, alluding to as far as revenue sources was again, uh, I know Ms. Gale has been looking at, uh, properties that we can utilize here in town for different reasons. But again, I want to look at, uh, identifying excess property or property that is underutilized to possibly lease out for solar or anything else that, you know, I, I don't want to say cell towers, but, um, you, there's a lot of uses that can be utilized for the underutilized property. Or I, I know of situations, I forget which town I was looking at the other day. They actually leased out space on their own school on the roof. So, but and it kind of falls, crosses lines between your green energy and mine, but, um, my ideas, but I really think it's, we, again, I'm looking, I'm trying to think outside the box for revenue sources for the town.
I think that, um, I, I, just as an aside to that, I know I had a conversation with Jen Willard a couple of years ago. They were looking to secure some hotspot devices and I asked her to negotiate with Verizon on that very issue. And then under, you know, it goes through a process. I don't know where that ever went. But Verizon had approached the schools about having a minor telecommunications facility, not a cell tower. But, and I said, you know, instead of an insignificant amount of dollars in rent, it would be way better if they gave you service. Like a couple of those MiFi things or what have you for.
Boosters or anything like that.
Yeah, you know, because there's kids that are doing remote work that didn't have, in, uh, certain areas, it didn't have good cellphone coverage today and did not have high-speed internet. So that would be a way to, uh, overcome that gap.
Kind of came up, um, you maybe mentioned the Mass Municipal Association. I know at the meeting this past year, that at the first one I attended, uh, the, the uh, restrictions and abilities to tax solar facilities are going to be, it's going to be changing down the road and, and those are thought process along that line. Again, you know, we've, I've heard about some of the different solar projects prior to being on the board as well as being on the board where, oh, we, we're going to come to town and we may give you some extra power for your schools. You know, these are things that we could talk to them and say, hey, you know, we've got some excess land, let's work together. So, yeah, but again, I'm, I'm just trying to think completely outside the box at everything we can look at. I jokingly joked as chief landess about, uh, there are actually some departments that actually advertise on their, their reserves.
Not to be negative, Natalie, on that one too.
No, I don't want to do that.
More organizations, more environmental groups, more environmental organizations are beginning to try to stall ground, clearing trees, open space, use of solar. They want them on buildings.
Where they belong.
Are what absorb the carbon.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I am open to sticking them on.
We don't want.
And I by no means was saying, let's clear land. No, not at all. You know, some of the, I think I mentioned it to you, um, when I was talking, Noble Hospital. The foyer there now, that over covered overhang is, that is all solar panels. You know, that's, and UMass, you go to their, their entire, some of their entire commuter lots are completely covered. So it eliminates two problems. You don't have to snowplow.
Yep.
And, and in some cases, they actually have low-grade heating that actually helps keep the, the ice from forming and, you know, there's, the green energy thing is a huge push and any way we can utilize it to benefit the town. And, and I can assist Ms. Gale on her venture and send people her way, anything I can do. I think that's enough out of me.
There was also discussion, very nice to hear. I forget. But they, um, maybe I was just talking to somebody in ag about this. Cause someone, there was a large, uh, farm just south of here that was sold and they're getting out of the ag business to be a solar farm.
I have heard.
And, and I think it's just, it's hugely unfortunate to lose primary ag land like that to solar. But those two can coexist. There are crops that can be grown under solar if you lift them up. It's expensive.
There's two large ones going up in Granville.
Expensive that you can do that, but versus putting it on the ground now, but you can then still use the land and, and also, um, for pasture land where I believe, I'm the last guy to talk about farming, but I got a, a primer on this. That there's, there's things that you can do where those two things can coexist. They're not diametrically opposed. But I've always been a big believer that the best use for solar is on every roof because that's already impervious. We should not be increasing impervious anywhere. Um, I know it hasn't stopped raining for forty days and forty nights, but the day will come when it doesn't. And we need that, you know, ground recharge of any rainwater we do get. So, we should be putting solar on buildings, not.
And like I said, I by no means was.
No, I hear you. No, I hear you. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, not, you know, we should look at this and, you know, I know, um, and then we also had a few years ago, this is how these meetings go along. It's me. Um, but we did have discussions years ago when, when I was not on this, prior to me joining this board and, and the, uh, the taxation for solar panels has changed.
Yes.
Right? Originally, the original proposal was to, to back to the select board was you tax them at the fair rate. It was like anything else based on their value and per square foot. Uh, you pull a building permit. If you're going to put up a million square foot of solar panels, good, a million square feet for your building permit. Uh, that got changed. Now they have a lot of pilots and a lot of it was legislatively done.
That's the, that's the big thing.
The legislation came over the top and now there's pilots and stuff that reduce the tax.
And to, to, um, make it incentivized, it's been basically tax-free all those properties and the real property.
Correct.
And that's what's coming from, uh, the legislature. There's, there's parameters there attached to it, but it's, 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 at least we're not going to have to just absorb it without any benefit.
All right. Um, and now we're behind a six forty-five. I said we were going to be done. Uh, is there anything else on select board goals and objectives that we want to talk about tonight?
No, I, I've got to go back. Like I said, I know I had mentioned some in the past. I thought they were on here. I do not see a couple of them, but I just have to go back to my notes and I brought, I got a new computer and brought them on.
Minor under.
I saw that. So I, I think, uh, real quick, I think we can take off twelve and thirteen because that money's been spent.
We've flagged policies also.
Yeah. And then eleven, uh, we already did that and we could just leave road project infrastructure and wipe out the comment because we did do that. Green energy is still going. Town hall roof replacement, we're down to the punch list. And that's enough edits for tonight. We can come back to this again next week. All right. Noble Steed, any update?
Uh, I was out there today. Uh, Ms. Poehler, uh, came out. There was a few concerns. I actually am going to, if they're still there when we leave, run up there and speak with her. There's progress being made, um, and, and that's all, that's the best I, we can do with working with the contractor there. So it's moving forward and uh, I'm keeping John Goddard and Sabrina apprised as when they aren't out there themselves and as well as Mr. Brown. We're still waiting on that form to be able to finally put in that cover.
We covered town administrative recruitment panel and job description. I did not find back. But we, can we just take a vote to send this, uh, and I apologize to, uh, Marissa Cook-Overgan, if this, I have not heard back from the attorney. Can I have a vote of this board to resend this to the town attorney if we haven't done it already for review?
I will make the motion to send that to the attorney for a review.
Second.
Doug Moblin, hi.
Jason Paul, hi.
Sam, you missed the deadline, by the way, the due date.
For what?
Oh, she had her baby?
Oh.
The twenty-second.
Who had a baby?
Well, that wasn't on purpose.
Who had a baby?
Marisa.
I didn't even know she was pregnant. Honestly, I never.
I didn't know that. Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Agri.
Marisa and her family and.
Boy, you're grown.
Forty.
Everybody's well?
Very well.
That's the most important.
Very well.
Amen. I'm sure she's not going to watch this.
That's why she was not here last time.
I say, that is a suitable excuse.
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we should clarify, we, I know, Nadine, how many, um, RFP packages have come in today? At least two so far for this, the CAO?
Correct.
So the question is, does the board, because really you should be picking the firm and then turning the firm over to the selection panel. Um, when does the board want to, uh, look at putting out some potential scheduling dates? You know, to, to think about that, because I mean, obviously each proposal comes with it a, a price proposal, but notwithstanding that, you might actually want to sit through the, uh, the interview process, just like you've watched in other communities that have interviewed these firms. So you have to be mindful of how you want to schedule that and what you want to do.
So when will we be needing to make that or can we carry that to the eighteen? Sorry, sixteen?
Well, you can, but you, that would monopolize your entire meeting if you, if you, if you did it the same night as your regular meeting. Cause we got the tax classification. We have other things already going on to that meeting agenda. So, or you could start earlier.
One, impossible.
So who's interviewing the firms?
Well, when you looked at the, when you looked at the, uh, the tapes you gave us, it was the board, it was the select board that was going to interview the firms.
Okay, that's.
The only thing I will add to that is the two of you will probably be happy that I opened up my mind to a screening committee.
Good. Now who should be on it?
I'm, I've, I, I have some proposals that if you're willing to talk about it. If you want to talk about it now, we can.
Let's just hold that thought. I just want to take a look at my calendar because we will come right back to it, I promise.
Oh boy, I did some heartfelt soul searching.
Sorry.
That's okay.
He kind of raised nipple chamber.
So next week we're not meeting because it's Columbus Day.
Yeah, my brother.
You babysat Columbus, didn't you?
I thought, I thought, are we still flying Columbus?
Easy. We're not getting into that tonight. That's what it says on my calendar. I'm just reading it.
I'm sure that's coming.
I mean, obviously.
Well, we could have a work session.
We can unseal, we can unseal the proposals next, early next week after the, um, after the Friday deadline, but the key thing is, is that if you're going to be interested in interviewing them all, it may not necessarily be on a day you want. We're going to have to make sure we can line them all up in one day.
Or an evening, correct?
Well, that, yeah, I mean that interchangeably, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm just making sure.
And again, that, that, that is an exercise that you'll be going through with Lisa and Nadine.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. I mean, as we, we'll just have to work around meeting schedules and everything else, but to try to pull that in.
Right.
I can pre, pre fix.
I mean, I can do a different day.
Right. That's what I'm saying. Cause we'll just have to find a night that, that will work for everyone. Okay. All right. Well, that's a good segue. Who's on the screening committee?
So I sat and re-watched, um, those very long videos. And, uh, did some research through, uh, some of the emails that have been going back and forth between ourselves, um, and some of the ones are similar. I wish we could put Carl on it, but he said that probably wouldn't be appropriate.
No kingmakers, no kingmakers.
Uh, but the, I, both chiefs, I'm, I'm, I'm good with. I think we should have a local business leader.
Wait, I'm going to try to write these down because I, I think we've got to vet some of this.
Yep, that, obviously, uh, I would like, you know, they talked a lot about it and some of the different plans about a citizen representative, uh, local business leader, the moderator. Um, and I think, uh, and since it's a pre-screening and some of these people may have to work with this individual down the road, and I'm not saying they should be involved in selecting their boss. A member from each collective bargaining agreement that is not a negotiating member, just to have some input. I don't think that's problematic. I know some people think, might think it's selecting or, but this is a pre-screening. These, these people are just there to have some input. You know, these are.
What would they provide?
Well, here, as I said to Carl today, you need, when we get to this point, you need a, 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 for lack of a word, you need a people person. And you know, you need to be able to talk to people. And I just want, I think it's, you know, I, I just think it would be a good idea to at least have somebody from a, a collective bargaining agreement, just to have some input. You know, they do not have to be involved in the selection, but it doesn't hurt to have them involved in the input. Again, the representative of the school department, I think that was already recommended. And then the other option was, as I read, was to let the, the, um, search firm put together their recommendation, but I'm okay with working on, you know, those are my recommendations who I would throw in there. I don't think I added anybody else afterwards. I spent a, a day and a half time still searching on this one, so. I think, you know, that's pretty much it.
How many people do think are on this committee? This screening committee, subcommittee?
I have not seen any recommendations. That's one thing I didn't see, you know, this is something we could also ask of the, whatever firm we select. You know, I was, I was again, watching the videos and reading the information that came from some of these companies. That's, that's something that can be done where they recommend this is who you should put in the screening committee. So, um, that could be a possibility, you know, dual input. And they might be able to say to us, hey, you know, you don't want to put somebody like, they, you know, they might be like, are you nuts with the collective bargaining agreement person? Somebody from a union just to, you know, or, you know, but I would, uh, I wouldn't be opposed to having them rec, have put some recommendation input when we decide that. But I'm okay with working with you guys and coming to some sort of consensus as Mr. Moblin said last time.
Diane?
Well, he rattled off four of your five, which is a mix of mine.
That's what I was going to write.
Plus one that you and I agree.
You can go by person or by position. It's totally up to you.
I, I'm not convinced on the collective bargaining representative. They're people person. I mean, these people are going to get that.
I, I, if, you know, this was, it said, I, I'm trying to think of what, some different ideas, you know, and I'm not, that's something definitely worth talking about, but if, I'm not opposed to saying no on that, but I really am, uh, vested in a business leader and a citizen representative. I missed that one. Sorry. Thanks for reminding me. So, go ahead.
Citizen representative, I'm not sure, and I said this early, I don't know what they would.
It's a different point of view.
Be able to bring to this unless that were Jim Putnam. Very knowledgeable on what the role entails, whereas if you asked me two years ago, I wouldn't be able to contribute squat to it. I don't know what a, it, it's a very selective citizen represent, representative, which is why I said Jim Putnam.
Uh, you know, if we're, are we looking at specific names right now? Is that what we're talking?
Doing it either way.
Either way.
So let me kind of give you.
If anybody's interested.
Right. We haven't asked any of these people yet either. So.
Somebody's going away. What?
So I personally had the, uh, select board chair. I also had, um, Mr. Putnam, that we really should ask him before we throw his name out. I did have the moderator. Um, it was suggested to, uh, discuss with Steve Presnell, former business manager for the schools. I think that's an excellent idea. And I have in common with you, Jason, I have police chief Landis.
I picked him because he's retiring.
Exactly.
So he's not.
That's the rumor.
Exactly.
And, but, yes, but I also. Thank you, Carl. Um, by the way, the one thing I'm really going to miss, the new person better have half a sense of humor that, or or at least humors me and laughs at some of my jokes.
We got to put that in the.
But, um, you, I think that the CAO is employed by the select board as the chief administrator of the town. And therefore I don't think it appropriate, my opinion, to have someone who would be reporting to the CAO directly or indirectly to be on said screening committee. And by, if you look at the organizational structure of the town, the police chief is a peer of the CAO, the fire chief is not. So as, as much as I love and respect Chief Stefanowitz, I just think it's a conflict for that. And therefore that's why, and it also falls under the union rep and the collective bargaining units. That being said, I'm not opposed to having either a member of the public and or a business leader, um, that can. That being said, I'm not opposed to having either a member of the public and or a business leader um that can spare the time.
Uh, yeah, I was thinking along the lines of like we did with the master planning committee.
Yep, but it this is different in that where these people will actually have day-to-day administrative. Responsibility for uh hiring and firing for anything pretty much below a department head. Right? That doesn't come in front of the board and discipline and and so on and so forth. So I think. That's, to me, that's highly relevant. So, you know, if you were to look at this, I would even say, and he'll probably kill me for mentioning, I wouldn't be opposed to um one uh. The Planning Board Chair, what Nate mentioned.
I was.
But the Planning Board Chair served on the last Fire Chief recruitment committee. Very even even tempered, very, very smart, very well spoken, very knowledgeable. I have a ton of respect for the guy. You know, but if his schedule, you know, he's he's a very busy guy, but if his schedule would permit it, that would be also someone that I would could, you know, would completely consider.
That that thought process crossed my mind because there we don't appoint that board, so.
A- and it's elected, but I wouldn't, it's not even for his role in that, you know, obviously, his it would be impossible for one to look at that and separate the two. But but for his experience outside is is as valuable as as not um. So.
And it seems like the the chairs are, former chairs and former chairs seem to have a better handle on things.
Well, I mean, uh, you know. Sorry, Mr. Putnam will mention you again. You know, Mr. Putnam's lived in town forever. He was the moderator for almost forever. And but he also was on the finance committee and and several other committees as well prior, prior during. He was on the two fifty committee. He's involved with a lot of other civic stuff. Yeah, so. So I just think that that's it's it's probably um, he's just a good guy and very, very knowledgeable about all things.
Very well rounded on it all.
And one of the few people that probably has been. Uh, I would dare to say it. I don't know what to be fact, but uh for almost as long as Carl's been here. In being involved with the town in one shape or another. So. I I didn't do a good job of flushing out my list while I was talking, but I think we have some consensus. So I think we can. If if, I mean, you have a couple. I think Diane and I are closer with some consensus on a list, because you're coming in late to the game with a list, so.
Uh, yeah, like I said, I had I held a firm position that I. And you realize I needed to be a little flexible, Mark.
You've come a long way from zero.
Yeah, zero, zero to something, right? Yeah, uh, uh, you know, and. Specific names, uh.
No, I think you can do it by position. I I I really do, because and no saying that if we ask any of these people to be on the committee that they would accept, right? Other than if the if if we if we. It was my position, and I see that she's here tonight, I would like to have the moderator on this panel. But if we name it as the moderator and they choose to not accept it, then we have to come back and revisit it. I wouldn't, in that particular one, I'm looking to have that position on that. On that subcommittee, the same thing with the police chief. Um, I think by by the org chart, that's a good person, a good position to have represented. And like I said, the school department, we can all have names involved, and we should probably put those forth to Nadine and Carl. To reach out to see if they'd be interested to serve, and then if they don't, we come back for our next meeting to.
Yeah.
To to go down the. Down the path, whether it be like in the school department, for example, if. You know, Mr. Presnell, we just threw him under the bus pretty hard, but you know, he's not, he doesn't, he's a consultant to the schools today, but he's not the business manager today.
Yeah.
But I think he is in a unique spot after serving in that role for many. I would say many, almost a decade of in that role. And, you know, interaction with Carl and and Town Hall to 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 bring value to a a search committee. And all of these people that I've mentioned. With uh significant experience, and I'm great with adding a business leader and or uh and or a citizen to this panel. I think is gonna make a good informed decision. The the search panel is gonna bring forth good candidates. That this committee is gonna put forth good. Good candidates that will be a good, that they believe will be a good fit for the town itself, because I think that those can be a mutually exclusive list.
Alright, so we will send a list of names to Nadine.
Well, let's let's do this, because it is growing late. Let's try to. Do we have exact exact session tonight, Carl?
No, you do not, sir. I just want to clarify on your list that you're still gonna have a member of the select board on your list. Because I knew you had volunteered. I know you volunteered for it last time, and the other two had asked you to be on it.
Well, I think it mattered if he was going to volunteer or not.
Yeah, well, yeah, I kind of saw the train coming, but good point. I had it on my list, and it was not on Jason's list. So I just, that was. Let's, I was trying to reconcile this very Solomon-like. So. Can we agree that the the select board chair is on it?
Yes.
Okay.
And then planning. Do you want me to go through a roster, and people can just say yes, just so we can get to a a?
And let me just play it out, Carl. Bear with. Can we agree that the police chief is on it?
Yes.
Can we agree and that the moderator is on this panel?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, if asked, will you accept?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good.
I wasn't sure.
Say no, and she was sitting here the whole time. Okay. Alright, so we got three from the list, and now can we agree to ex- should we agree to extend an invitation to? Mr. Putnam and Mr. Presnell, or I'll listen one at a time. Mr. Presnell.
Uh, yes, I will do that.
And Mr. Putnam?
Yeah.
Yes.
And how about, are we, are we, are we getting close? One, two, three, four, five?
Because that includes Doug, that's six.
Six? Was it my counting wrong?
That's five. That's five.
I was gonna.
I have the planning board chairman on there.
We're getting to him now.
Who already agreed on that.
Okay.
Okay. I was gonna just add it. So I believe we have consensus around this now, if everyone is okay with this, and so. Boss Chair, Police Chief, Moderator, and we will invite Mr. Presnell, Mr. Putnam, and the Planning Board Chair, which is currently Mr. Dory.
And yes, even number?
Hmm?
I don't know if we have. That makes six, and then shall we each choose a business leader we would like to extend an offer to? Or at least have discussion among us?
Sure.
Yes.
And that would make seven, should they all accept.
My thinking is you're gonna have five, but.
I know.
From this six, so, but we'll see, and we'll come back to this, but that's, I think this was progress and movement to get going on in the right direction on this.
Right.
I do not want to be the one holding up the grudge anymore.
Okay. T-Mobile Hometown Grants?
I did get a response from Chief Landis regarding possible uh we talked about, and I believe it was. Right when I first came on or either before having a uh boat storage, for a grease boat, some sort of boat. House. And he is the only one that has come forward with anything right now.
Well, then there you go.
And that's so that's what I'm gonna run with. You know, I think I I it's been out there for almost two weeks now.
Is it shovel ready?
Uh, based on what he said. I think they've got some designs, and then they um. He mentioned about reaching out to Westfield Technical Academy, which I can do the construction technology. And see if that's be something they could maybe throw in. For the uh, we'd have to take the timing. It has to be shovel ready within twelve months. It does not have to be started. It, you know, so we can get the grant given, but it has to be ready to, once it starts. You know, be ready to go in twelve months.
Okay, did you, did you look at any of the other? Um, because I know we discussed.
Brand award winners?
Yeah, who won? So what is it tip? What do they like to see in their pictures and their advertising of what they give?
They like this. They like the the recreational things are obviously very well enjoyed, you know, and we unfortunately, we got a little ahead of that.
Well, but it was, I guess, and thank you for. Feeding the segue is, why wouldn't we make it, wouldn't we consider? Not that there's anything wrong with the boat. I'm just trying to think of what would be a winning proposal. And why wouldn't we go and even pitch a portion thereof of the pickleball courts, or maybe having the uh better lighting, different lighting, better fencing, whatever. And and or reducing the amount of the C P A appropriation that we spend if we offset it with a grant. Every warrant article is usually net of. Grants and awards and and so on and so forth. So if we got, what is it, fifty grand was the max?
Fifty grand.
You know, if we got. God help us, fifty grand to offset the two hundred something that we put up for the pickleball, and I'm using that one as an example.
Well, you also have the, you know, one of the things that's come up is. We know they're doing the study on school fields, and there's been, we've been starting to use Wally Park a lot more. You know, that pickleball and additional lighting, who knows, we could tie that in together to save us money.
And the other flyer is on that is part of, I believe, part of the pickleball was that the volleyball needs to move. Here at fifty. So why wouldn't we do a grant application around that and have a new volleyball court constructed with lighting? Because I didn't, I don't know if it was in their budget or not, but I certainly, I don't know if the lighting was it, because it said the lighting part of the proposal for the pickleball was there is already lighting at fifty Park, which is the one street. So we all know that's not gonna work anyway, I don't think. So if there's literally a pole with a light on it, you could put more lights on it, but it's gonna need more lighting. Again, totally up to.
No, but I know.
I just was looking at previous grant type things in the corporate space where people are going for a grant, they're looking.
You know, the other thing that they've been focusing on is the a lot of the like very rural communities across the country. The high-speed internet or or why high-speed wireless internet, some sort of.
Right.
Connectivity. Those are the big things, you know, mostly recreation, uh, things geared towards kids. Whether it be school and and and. Getting everybody up to speed on the internet. Those are the things that I've seen the most of.
Okay, protocols update?
Uh, you guys were all gonna look at that?
I think everything.
Carry.
See anything. I was reading that today. I did not see anything that popped out.
I didn't either, but I just want to carry it to the next meeting, because it's eight o'clock.
Yeah.
And.
Anything on the next one?
Well, I I sent back, the moderator had sent back some dates that she is uh. Out of town, out of incommunicado, and I sent one date that I will be.
This is the next one.
Yeah.
Boarding Committee on boardrooms.
Oh, crap, we'll come right back, but I didn't mean to blow by it. Let's get this town meeting.
Wasn't going to lie in there.
Okay. The town meeting. Uh. Dates to consider. The moderator had some dates that she was unavailable, correct?
Yes, um. Tuesday night is it's kind of a typical night we would normally kind of lean towards um. I'm away the week up to twenty second to the twenty eighth, and then the following Tuesday ends up being Halloween, and you said you're not available on November seventh, so we're kind of looking at November fourteenth.
We November seventh is election day. Are we? We don't have elections in our town, though, right?
No, we're we're a town. Those are cities.
So we we could meet on the seventh.
I thought you said that you had something.
The following, I believe. Oh, wait, let me double check.
I should remember the seventh on that you have something you had to be out of town for that day.
I mean, obviously, you're gonna stay away from the Thanksgiving weekend.
I come unavailable on the seventh.
Well, and also, like, we don't know, like, what our attorney, where he lives, if he has elections, he needs to be in his town, so I think it's a little inconsiderate for people to plan it on. If people need to from other towns have to go, you know.
Point taken.
Because we will have some people who are.
Well, the other thing is depending upon what, we're still waiting for the different articles. I mean, I think I tried to give you a couple of the draft ones we have so far, but. You know, we don't have everything in final form. To even send to the attorney yet to have.
You know, to get to the point where we're ready. You've got it in your folders.
What's the posting? How many days posted ahead does that have to be?
For special, it's fourteen days.
So we're looking, it needs to be posted, so the articles need to, we might be cutting it close by November fourteen. If you think about, here we are, our second.
Yeah.
The twenty, the twenty first is is the Thanksgiving week, and then there's the weekend afterward. People are traveling back.
Right, so we might be cutting it close.
You you could be going into the first week of December.
Because if we plan for the fourteenth, then we don't even have the articles out. And I don't know how long it takes for the attorney to get the warrant together. I'm just afraid scheduling it the fourteenth is gonna be cutting it a bit close.
Well, like I said, I know, I know the planning board has given me two of them. And and I know there has to actually be a third one coming from them, because one of the two they gave me is a petition.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, so you are, we are.
I won't make anything.
Process than I'm aware of.
And after that, you start getting real quick.
Right.
Yeah, you don't want to start, because people start going away and.
I'm I'm available both, so if you think you got one, I'm trying to pull it up for the fourteenth, that's fine.
I just have a little air on the side of caution, maybe. Rather than.
Either way, you're in range for the planning board. If you set the date of twelve five, you're in range for the. Planning Board hearing closure dates. They just need to know that we're gonna have one, because they've got to close, but I think it's six months. I get those dates messed up. I've written down one.
Doug, are you suggesting, are you suggesting uh Tuesday, November fifth, too?
No, I'm suggesting Tuesday, December fifth.
Right. Tuesday, December fifth.
Correct.
So that could be the backup. If we don't have it the fourteenth, it wouldn't end up having to be December fifth.
Or we put a stake in the ground now and say, that's our go date, and we just try to get it, and we try to get it done. If you think we can get it in for the November fourteenth? That gives you, you know, six weeks from now, right?
Yeah, but it has to be posted by the first, so.
I want to err on the side of caution, but this, I'm good. It's, what do you think?
It's actually fifteen days. It's the fourteen days plus one, so.
Oh, okay.
December fifth makes more sense to get.
Yeah.
Everything through the thirties and.
It makes more sense than me, but I don't.
I mean, what are.
And I don't know, like, where the article, what the state of that other third article is, so.
Well, plus, there's the one that the board wants to have for that that uh. Three percent uh fee for the marijuana, too?
It was this, it was three, just, no, four, just related.
I'm not worried so much about the location, because um. The the better thing about November fourteen would be was probably actually have it in the gym. It would be less worried about overflow. December fifth, we might want, if we shoot for December fifth.
I want to see if we're conflicting with the sports event.
Early, and I only know this, but sports schedules are already out, so we don't. Might not have the option of the high school gym for December fifth, if we need to go to a larger facility.
Well, we could use the uh, we could use the auditorium on the fifth, if if the gym isn't available, but if you're thinking. If you're thinking November fourteenth and December fifth, we'll go back and ask the schools tomorrow, okay?
Sounds great. Do you want me to just reach out to them tomorrow morning, Carl?
Uh, sure, if you want to do that.
Well, you know, I'm gonna have to.
Just let me know, yeah, ju- just let, let me know what they say for those two dates.
Talk to the school tomorrow.
Madam Moderator, we've never had a town meeting at halftime during a basketball game. That would be a first.
And cheerleaders don't perform during halftime. Um.
We've done outdoors, we've done.
We've done.
Azimis.
A little bit cold December fifth. I do have a name I can break out, but um. Yeah, we'll work it out. We'll talk to them tomorrow. We'll see what they're looking at, and I'll get in touch with you.
All right, when you follow up with an email, include Ben Coyle on that, so he'll understand what's coming down the pipeline and what the preparation is. Include Michelle, because she'll be involved in posting it and and all those issues.
Yes, because we don't know if, hopefully Ben doesn't have anything on either of those dates either. I don't know his, you know, other towns and.
Well, I was just thinking, because if Michelle's end of office date is gonna be the eighth. This would also allow us to make sure that we've held this town meeting before she leaves.
That's a very good point. That's a very good point. We definitely need to do that.
Yeah, I I don't want to lose any continuity.
And I'll just add to that, and when I I did speak with Michelle today, and she has, if anyone hasn't worked with Michelle, she's probably one of the most. Efficient. Definitely the most efficient person I've ever worked with.
Okay.
Okay.
That, we've covered that one. I want to go back to the proto- uh boards committee, commissions and committees handle. Your boy.
I was waiting for feedback from you guys. You were gonna give me feedback. What you like, what you didn't like, and then I was gonna flesh it out more based on that.
That was slow. We didn't pull in that information. We were just talking about.
I didn't have too much commentary. I think it's all well and good. I just love to see this as kind of a website off of the. Off the town webpage, and then and then just have it. available, then you can update it and um. That was really it.
Okay.
I think it's a generally, it's a good idea.
And we'll carry on.
Yeah, I'm not, everything that this is very similar to what you you had last week, isn't it?
It is exactly what you were.
I didn't see any. I did not see anything changed.
It's in your court.
Yeah, I know, uh.
Alright, so last item of business, I believe, before we go around the room is um. Sewer rate. So we had a letter from last week for from Randy. That gave his recommendation. I, first of all, I just want to say that I, we've carried this on the tax rate forever. I don't see us getting away from carrying a portion of the sewer use on the tax rate. I, it's supposed to be, in theory, it should be a hundred percent paid by users of the the sewer. However, this is a health issue. The reason that they were put in was to to clean, help clean up uh, Lake Congamont. Um, it's been extremely valuable in that regard. The town has invested literally millions of dollars in the sewers. And literally millions of dollars in improving water quality at the lake. And we just have not gotten enough users outside of that first area, phase one and phase two to 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 bite the bullet and go and put in a larger sewer project. Um, I've talked about this till I'm purple in the face about um, monies that were expended in design and then got shot down or potential design projects that were shot down at town meetings because of their expense. Um, and I just don't and Jason, more power to you if you want to try to go get a sewer project or three or financing for same.
I'm gonna try.
Amen. I I'm I'm not standing in your way, but uh, having been at town meeting where we where they took out the um. The one on Powder Mill hurt the most and that would have caught the schools and caught that whole Burnwood, Birchwood area. And done a complete resurface of, and the reason, one of the reasons why uh, Powder Mill Road is in the shape it's in right now is that was a full depth reclamation project as part of a sewer project. Um, but here nor there, so I I don't see us getting away from carrying some portion of the sewer. The sewer is just not economically viable on its own with the rate payers that are paying it to, if you took the cost and divided by there's no, no division number that makes that economically feasible for a homeowner um, or business for that matter to to uh. To afford. So we're we're going to have to continue to carry it. I know the formula shifted around as to how we did it. Um, you know, with the IMA pavement and total town contribution has slightly decreased over time, but the last three years, um. It's been actually five years. It's been fairly steady and it needs to probably hang out in that space. So I think we're gonna, and with this new rate agreement that we did, it does have some tiering, which made it a little more appealing. Um, but I think we're going to need to need to increase the rate. Um, and Randy gave you a little table for um, to base your your thoughts on. So I I don't think it needs to be born completely on the rate payer, but there needs to be, uh, there does need to be an increase to help offset. Um, so and and Randy's point is if the sewer commissioners opt to maintain the privacy approved rate of fifteen, the board should expect increase, increase the town subsidy to two fifty five. So I think we can look at this and say we're going to be right in that range for the subsidy, but I still think we need to up up the rate a little bit in order to keep that subsidy in range as we move to a new agreement. So it doesn't need to, you know, we can't double the rate, obviously. We're not looking at two.
No.
But um, you know, certainly a a ten or twelve percent rate increase to, you know, somewhere just shy of twenty to raise that hundred grand to help reduce the uh, the burden on the overall tax rate, but expect that that we are going to be contributing. Um.
There's no way around it.
Two hundred and, you know, two twenty five ish to the to the tax.
That was part of my, eventually if I can get.
And if you want to.
Going, that's gonna.
And there's going to be, yeah, there was, I had some kind of horrible joke, but it's really in poor taste. Um, regarding taxes, but this, you know, I don't see any way around it.
We've already approved going to fifty prior, already approved going to fifteen percent to twelve twenty five. Correct. That's.
Correct.
Where it's, that's where it's going October first. To, but yesterday was approved to go to twelve twenty five. I just got a boatload of data from Randy on this. I just got it at three o'clock.
And he's online here with us, by the way, if we have any questions for him.
I, oh, there he is. I've been working on number, raw numbers he gave me earlier, but I got the actual Penn One billing numbers. And if I may, I would like to have a little time to churn that and come back and tell you what my observation is and what might be a recommendation. It already is going to be twelve twenty five.
Yep.
And I haven't talked any further to Randy about it either since I just got the numbers at three o'clock. Um, but you know, it may include some tiered rates. Like the water.
Randy, can this, can this issue, Randy, can this wait until the meeting on the sixteenth to be decided?
Yeah, I I think that's that's a possibility. That's fine.
Okay.
I I agree to get it, get it right the first time, so I don't I don't mind an extra two weeks if we need to go down the route.
When's your next billing cycle?
Well, we did, we did, we just issued bills or are in the process of issuing bills for our spring spring period. So the rate that we're talking now will be effective October first or or at yesterday. So this is the, this is for the next bill cycle moving forward.
And and that. April, right?
Carl, you, yeah, that you.
That gets billed in April.
It billed in April, April, May timeframe, correct?
Okay. Alright then, we'll carry that under old business.
Right.
Okay. Uh, other old business, Carl?
I'm all set.
Jason?
I am good. Nothing to bring.
Thank you.
With something.
I, Carl and I did meet with the housing authority, presented them all the paper I had, which was all new paper to them. They had zero. Um, so they're kind of excited about the potential for reviving this. They have a few contacts. They can maybe get me some information on why it wasn't a go back then. And um, take it from there.
And the other thing I would like to ask if it's okay is um. So I don't do the same redundant stuff I was going to do with Randy, probably myself. What information did you get? That what were you looking for?
I was particularly interested in how many accounts were paying the minimum charge. I have all of that. I have the entire billing.
Well, as you know, it's hard for us to talk about this stuff otherwise, so.
What?
It's hard to talk about it otherwise, so I just.
Right, I have the whole thing. I have the whole data done.
Okay.
Water and sewer, so I can see the in and out.
Because I had asked that general question back when I first talked to Randy, just to get an idea of what the average increase is going to look like, so. But that's okay. And you're looking to go specifics.
Yeah, I'm gonna play it out. Here's what it would be at this. Here's what it would be at this rate. Plus, if it were tiered with some options, and I'm going to read it all to Randy first before you guys get to chime in and make sure it's valid, accurate.
Okay.
Assumptions.
Very good.
There's very, very few assumptions in it. It's.
I don't know what they say about assuming anything.
It's a lot of math, but.
Thank you, Diane.
Okay, uh. One was, we did receive a letter, uh, just a note. It addressed to the select board from Ken Eggleston, the trustee for uh, one forty one Congamon. Um. That the four dads pub is no longer involved, but he is close to finding a better fit for the lake and the town. So he'll keep a surprise to that. I think this probably ties a little bit into your liquor license discussion, but that is a property that's been under renovation for Ohio. The marina part's open, but the uh, the restaurant has not.
Leave it still piece of plywood for the door.
Yeah, that's always the last thing you put in, so it doesn't get damp. I haven't been in inside in a while, so, but that's just an update that I got on that. Um. Talked about Mass Mutual, talked about Triple C. So the last thing before we get out of here is to remind everyone once again. Um, October fourteenth noon, Wally Park, Cops First Fire Department softball game. It's fundraiser for breast cancer. So come early, bring money. Um, and the police and fire department are are going to be accepting donations at the gate. Um, that's a worthy cause. Uh, it should be a fun day. Uh, they've already been talking a lot of smack amongst themselves, so um. Come on out, have a good time. Huh?
I don't think we've ever won a game.
Well, they've been accused. Yeah, well, there's all kinds of. Come out and see for yourself, buddy. You might even be playing, who, for all I know.
Are they gonna allow donations beforehand or are they gonna?
Sure, we will gladly take donations and you can make them out to either the Southwick Police Association or the Southwick Fire Association. If you're writing a check. Uh, cash, you can drop off at the police station or the fire station or uh, I'll gladly take a check and deliver it to them myself.
Perfect.
Any other questions before we move on?
None from me.
Well, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
We will, I'll make that motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Nice to meet everybody.
You too.